Good evening, everyone. I call the city council meeting for Wednesday, May 22, 2024, to order. And as we get close to the one anniversary of the tragic event at 324 Main, I'd like to take a little privilege and offer the muffled silence tonight for the three gentlemen that tragically lost their lives: Brandon Colvin, Daniel Prehn, and Ryan Hitchcock. Thank you. If you would all please stand and join Alderman Rick Dunn in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Mr. Crupp, please call the roll for tonight.
Burkholder?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
T. Dunn?
Here.
Lynch?
Here.
Newton?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Reinards?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
And R. Dunn, sorry.
Here.
Ted President, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening and welcome, everyone. As we begin the meeting of the City Council, I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's joining through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're certainly happy you're participating in your city government, but ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place. If, for the folks in here, if you have your cellphone, if you'd just be kind enough to turn it, put it on silent or turn it off, simply it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. Now, if you want to address the council during the discussion item or others, please come to the podium, wait for someone to address you. The podium, the microphone is above you. Love to know your name, order, address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. And you'll have five minutes on the discussion item and three minutes on the others. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. Will, in all, remove approval of the City Council meeting minutes for May 8, 2024? Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Ms. Gleason, is there a city administrator update tonight?
Just two brief reminders. Monday, the majority of city offices will be closed in observation of Memorial Day, and next week is a fifth Wednesday, so we will not be in chambers next week.
Thank you, ma'am. Will, in all, remove approval of the report of the Committee of the Whole for May 15, 2024? Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have one proclamation this evening. LGBTQ+ Pride Month, June 2024, read by Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderwoman McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Whereas equity, inclusion, respect, and safety for all persons is a core value of the city of Davenport, and whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning LGBTQ+ communities contribute to the cultural, civic, and economic success of our city, and whereas we know that communities succeed and achieve their best potential when forward-thinking individuals set their sights on the journey for a brighter tomorrow, and whereas the fight for dignity and equality for LGBTQ+ individuals is reflected in the tireless dedication of advocates and allies who strive to forge a more inclusive society and commit to bending the arc of our community towards justice, and whereas LGBTQ+ advocates have spurred sweeping progress by changing hearts and minds and by demanding equal treatment under our laws, from our courts and in our politics, and whereas we celebrate our community's diversity and welcome all residents who live here, regardless of their national origin or ancestry, race, color, religion, creed, sex, marital status, age, mental or physical disability, political affiliation, gender identity, familial status, sexual orientation, or financial or socio-economic status, and whereas the city has championed a non-discriminative environment for LGBTQ+ individuals through ordinances in 2000, 2008, and 2020, and whereas in 2020, the city of Davenport was the first city in the state of Iowa to ban conversion therapy, which is a harmful attempt to change someone's sexual orientation or gender identity through unethical and ineffective tactics, and now therefore, we, Mike Manson, Mayor, and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim June 2024 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in Davenport, reaffirming our community's shared values of compassion, inclusion, respect, and dignity, as well as our commitment to building an environment and a community in which everyone is valued and has an opportunity to thrive, and encouraging the citizens of Davenport and the greater Quad Cities to likewise affirm these values of inclusion to celebrate our LGBTQ+ neighbors, dated this 22nd day of May, 2024. I move the proclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And Adam Peters, Director of Operations, First O'Clock Incorporated, will be meeting me at the podium.
I'm Adam Peters, the Director of Operations at Clock, Inc., and for those that might not know of Clock, Inc., we are the Quad Cities' only nonprofit LGBT+ community center, offering eight different support groups of all ages, free and reduced professional counseling services, a gender-affirming clothing closet, a library, computer lab, events for the community, trainings for organizations, businesses, and educational institutions, and a whole host of partnerships with other amazing QC organizations. We also are open for a very popular community meal on Thanksgiving and Christmas Day to those who might not have a safe and affirming place to gather. This is a one-of-a-kind community center, and the closest thing to it is located over three hours away. We at Clock, Inc. want to sincerely thank the city of Davenport for issuing this pride proclamation. A Gallup poll released in March 2024 reports 7.6% of U.S. adults are identifying as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or some other sexual orientation besides heterosexual. If you apply that percentage to the population of Davenport, we'd have an estimated 7,548 LGBT+ residents living here. In the five years that Clock, Inc. has been open, our demographics show that out of all five Quad Cities, we have served Davenport residents the most. That breaks down to 3,466 individual impressions of someone from Davenport using Clock, Inc.'s services in that time. And if you know anything about keeping track of demographics for individual services or events, you know that number is actually a lot higher. LGBT+ Davenporters are vital to the vibrancy of this city and this region. We live here because we've always lived here. Our families are here. Our life is here. And we also move here for the rich culture, deep history, job opportunities, and unique regional river views. But we also move away due to the anti-LGBT+ laws that have been passed in this state. We are part of organizations and businesses that open and ones that sadly don't make it and close. We are a part of neighborhoods that flood and ones that don't. We are residents in brand-new apartment buildings downtown and ones in disrepair that collapse, displacing, maiming, and killing residents. Just as the city of Davenport is charged with showing up and serving all of its residents, we need Davenport to take further steps in showing up for its LGBT+ residents. One pride proclamation every single year doesn't achieve that work. It's only a starting place. I'm leaving you all with calendars of almost 30 different pride events in the Quad Cities held in the month of June. We'd love to see you all at some of those events, supporting and uplifting your LGBT+ community. And please know you're always welcome at Clock, Inc. for a tour and discussions around how the city can take bigger steps to being a proud ally, making our city's nickname of Iowa's Front Porch the most welcoming, affirming, and uplifting place that it should be. Thank you again for this proclamation, and happy pride to all Davenporters.
Thank you, sir. We have one presentation this evening. It's for our eighth cohort for the Davenport U Citizens Academy. So I want to thank the Davenport residents for investing time and participating in this Citizens Academy. This is, again, the eighth cohort. Throughout their time with the city, participants got a behind-the-scenes look at their inner workings of the local government, our local government. Program highlighted departments including finance, civil rights, public works, parks and recreation, community and economic development, fire, PD, human resources, IT, the library, as well as the Scott Emergency Communications Center and Medic. We hope these participants continue their civic engagement by taking advantage of other opportunities offered throughout the city. I will have Ms. Ellie McWilliams meet me at the podium to recognize the graduates of the eighth cohort for the Davenport Citizens Academy. Please.
Okay, we have Jeff Banks.
And just so everybody knows, it says certifying, recognized in the name, graduate of Davenport U Class 8. The passion, commitment, dedication to be an engaged member of our community is commendable and should be celebrated.
Bradley, again.
Congratulations.
Jordan Del.
Congratulations.
Nathaniel Golter. Julia Mahoney Hansen. Karina Mendez. Brian Nielsen. Mary Moore. Louis Vasquez. Sarah Watson. And Michael Webler.
Congratulations.
Counsel, if you want to join behind them, stand up and kind of slide together here a little bit. We're trying to get everybody in. And tell us where we need to be and where we need to move. Tell us if we need to move.
I'm going to have everyone slide to the left just a little bit.
To the right, all right.
Yes, you're right, sorry. A little more. I said a little, a little more. Okay. One, two, three.
All right. Good job.
We'll pause a second if you guys want to head out, or you're welcome to stay. As you're leaving, Ms. McWilliams, thank you very much for what you did. So let's give her a little applause. Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to petitions communications. I just want to say, everybody remember Monday Memorial Day. If you're running to a veteran or service member or you have a moment to go to an activity or event, take a time and just remember what Memorial Day's for, the soldiers that gave their lives in defense of our nation. So I see Alderwoman McGinnis.
Yeah, just one more reminder. The third ward meeting will be tomorrow night at 6:30 at Frank Smart School. Enter the West 6th Street door, come to the library, and we will be looking at the new school building plans for the new school building, hear about the kind of things they'll be doing there. This will be a 6th through 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, and it will be a new way of sort of looking at schools, and it'll be a $52 million investment on the west end. So please join us tomorrow night, whatever ward you're in. If you'd like to know, 6:30, Frank Smart School. Enter on the west street side. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Kelly?
Thank you. I wasn't going to say anything until Adam spoke this evening. I want to credit him for what he said when he said the GLTQ support more than once a year proclamation, because we had a GLTQ member in this building that has quit his job due to harassment and has moved on. So the support would be nice to see more than once a year, and it would be nice to see within-house. And when you know better, you do better. I'm just going to get off my soapbox, because I know y'all get tired of me reprimanding when there's things that are going wrong, and you guys look at me like I'm the problem, because I want to bring light to the problems. So I'll get off the box and remind you that on the 28th of this month, I will be having a remembrance program for those that died at 324 Main, and there'll be a program right after my program as well that the folks that you guys said were there five minutes of fame and they wouldn't keep coming, that have been here a year later, they're putting on a visual as well. So I would hope that you guys will want to be part of either one of those programs on the 28th. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Anyone else? Very good. We'll move to, we have one item on the discussion agenda tonight. It's a resolution accepting work completed on the Modern Woodman Park Fire Suppression Replacement Project by the Henley Group of Muscatine, the amount of $1,035,320. Is there any public comment?
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. My name's Dale Gilmore, and I live in the 6th Ward. So why did the fire suppression system need to be replaced? Well, I'll tell you exactly why. According to the stadium lease agreement, along with the many amendments, it requires the Leasie to simply plug in the heat tape, already supplied and installed by the city of Davenport, that is wrapped around the exposed plumbing and prevents the water inside from freezing. Guess what? That didn't happen. The Leasie failed to fulfill his part of the contract. The water in the pipes froze, and the pipes all split, and now we're supposed to pay the bill. I hold in my hand a copy of the current lease stadium agreement. I'm sure all of you read that. It's only like 18 pages with amendments, addendums, and all that other legal stuff. And I'd like to point out a couple of things. On page 11 of the agreement, and I'm going to quote this. It says under insurance that the Leasie is required to have commercial general liability insurance, including bodily injury, umbrella personal injury, and property damage coverage, which names the city as an additional insured with limits of not less than $1 million each or occurrence, and $2 million general aggregate, and $2 million aggregate for less than, oh, for products complete out of operations. Such insurance shall be provided as per an occurrence basis, not on a claims made basis, including coverage for premises and operations, independent contractors, and claims made based on, shall include, or project completed operations. So, okay, if the Leasie has a forklift and they poke a hole in the wall, guess what? They have to fix it. Okay. Now, let's go to, let's go to page three here where we talk about the premises. The premises shall mean ballpark, Florian Keane Parking Lot, the parking lot across Gaines Street from the ballpark, and all the amenities and improvements, present and future, that are constructed or placed within or abutting the ballpark pursuant to this lease. Now, I'm not saying that, yeah, the bill needs to be paid, but the bill doesn't need to be paid by us. It's right in the lease. And I know I brought up stuff before. How can we pay to pick up his garbage? How can we pay this? How can we do that? Well, it's in the lease. Well, guess what, folks? It's in the lease. So let's, how about the city? We sent him a bill for $1,030,320. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Gary Eklund, I live in Davenport, Iowa. I wanted, I wasn't going to speak until I heard that gentleman, and I don't always agree with that gentleman. And that doesn't mean, you know, you disagree on 10 things, you agree on 10 things, whatever. But I want to praise Mr. Rick Dunn for being the nine-to-one vote over this lease some time ago. A lot of times, people don't do a nine-to-one vote because you look at the skunk, you look like the skunk at the garden party. Everybody else agrees, and you don't. I commended that man for being the sole vote against a lease that didn't really look all that good for the citizens of Davenport, but was great for the owners of the team. I want to praise that gentleman for bringing forward what he just brought forward. This is something that was apparently due to their negligence, and they should pay for it. Simple. Make them pay for it. If the city has to pay for it and sue them to get it back, the city's been, the city has been talking about how they're going to pay out a whole bunch of money because the lease requires it? Well, if the lease requires the city to pay $100 gazillion dollars...
Yeah, Gary, I'll give you your time. Hold on. If we could ask the folks in the audience to please not talk so we can hear what's going on. Continue, Gary.
Yeah. So if the city is going to be asked to pay $100 gazillion for different stuff that's coming up that supposedly has to be done because Major Baseball says this, Major League Baseball says we have to do this, or they'll sue us, then the city should sue them for the million or withhold, whatever. But if the contract says they're liable, make them pay for it. This was a bad lease, and there is one person that I'm drawing attention to, and that led to be listened to you all. Recently, there was an eight-to-two vote over something. Sometimes you got to be the minority, even if you're going to lose. You look like the skunk at the garden party. Maybe people hate you, but you weren't elected for a popularity contest. Well, you kind of were, because you won the election. But if you think you're right, and you're one, or two, or three, or four, vote your conscience. You're going to have some votes that you may even vote the wrong way, that you know you're voting the wrong way. Like, I think people recently voted in an eight-to-two vote where they knew they were voting the wrong way, but vote the right way.
Thank you, Erin Vales. Next, please.
LaShawna Dixon, Word 7. I am so tired of this. I almost said John O'Donnell. That's how long I've been here. Modern Woodman, ballpark thing, being so out of line. And to be honest, I did look into it just a pinch. And it just looks like to me, and, you know, conversations that I've had with some people, is that this is just a jacked-up contract, period. If it's in the agreement that we pay for it, then pay for it. Baseball here, to be honest, this is the only thing that we have in the area. In Davenport, we have the Mark and the Moline, but they're not really even doing nothing over there. I mean, they do stuff, but I would rather go to the ballpark here than to travel across the river to go there. This is really a great asset. It's not these individuals' fault that they got a, well, for all of us, it may not seem the best contract. Pay it and pay it. Pay it. And then when the contract comes up again, make it correct. That's not everybody's fault. I understand why people are against it. Yes, it costs a lot of money, but at the same time, it's a contract we have. It's the only thing, really, in Davenport, we have entertainment, because I'm not going to the Adler Theater. I'm going to the ballpark. So it's not their fault that they have a messed-up contract.
Thank you. Next, please.
Jessica Knowles, Second Ward. The only thing I can say is I'm tired of the city paying for other people's mistakes. It's time to hold them accountable for their own.
Thank you. Anybody else? Very good. Will, in all, please move consideration of the resolution. Motion in a second. Any discussion from alderfolks? See? Alderwoman Lynch?
Thank you. I do have a question about the process and how we decide whether or not we are going to pay for maintenance expenditures. So for this example specifically, who, what department, or who is in charge of reviewing the terms of our leases and whether or not it is a financial responsibility for the city or if it should fall on the tenant?
In this particular case, it's my understanding that when they did the site visit, when the, when the incident occurred, the breakage, that the contractors who reviewed it couldn't definitively say if it was just an age of the infrastructure issue or a combination of things. So again, I think that would come back to a burden of proof on what the ultimate reason for the failure was. And I think we, as staff had committed in the work session we did a couple of months ago, we will be coming back for further discussion with the council on the lease in total.
Thank you. I would, I'm sure you don't know the answer to this, but I would be interested to see the contractor that was hired for that opinion or that analysis, and if a second or even a third opinion were offered, because this is a very large expenditure. And when tenant and leasing and, you know, repair costs, right, it's pretty black and white in a contract. So I would like to see that process from kind of start to finish and how we determine who's responsible for these expenses. So, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. I was not aware of that, and I will look forward to following up on this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Crupp, please call. Roll for the resolution. McGinnis?
Yes.
R. Dunn?
Yes.
Reinards?
No.
Burkholder?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
And Jobchin?
Yes.
Nine yeses and one no, Your Honor. Very good. The resolution passes. The next item is for approval of all items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Motion in a second. Mr. Crupp, please call roll for all items on consent. Gripp?
Yes.
R. Dunn?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Burkholder?
Yes.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Reinards?
Yes.
And Jobchin?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor. Very good. Consent approved. Next area is, are there any other ordinance resolutions, motions? We have one, but first, we need to suspend the rules, if you're so inclined. And so is there a motion for suspension of the rules and vote on, add and vote on this item?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion in a second for suspension of the rules. Mr. Crupp, please call the vote on suspension. Lynch?
Yes.
Reinards?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Kelly? McGinnis?
Yes.
Burkholder?
Yes.
R. Dunn?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
And T. Dunn?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor?
Very good. The rules are suspended. So the resolution you have now is a resolution approving a street closure request, listed dates, an outdoor event. LaShana Dixon, 324 Main Memorial, downtown, 3 p.m. to 10 p.m. Tuesday, May 28, 2024. The closure will be Main Street from West 3rd to 4th Street. Is there any public with comment? Will an alderman please move the res, the consideration of the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion from alderfolks? Very good. Brian, please, Alderman Kelly?
Once again, this was something that was put on by the folks in the community. I just want to let that be known, not the council.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Anybody else? Very good. Brian, or, sorry. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll for the resolution approval.
Kelly? T. Dunn?
Yes.
Reinards?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Burkholder?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
And R. Dunn?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor?
Very good. That's approved. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second, motion to second. All in favor? Any opposed? Very good. Have a good Memorial Day weekend.